The fact of the matter is, the marketplace doesn't look at it that way at all. The marketplace looks at it exactly the opposite. The marketplace says, "Show me the parcel of land. Show me its attractiveness, its market position. Show me the densities that I'm allowed to do there. Show me your zoning. Show me exactly what the opportunities are, and I'm going to calculate based on those densities," meaning size of building, density of building, type of use you're going to allow there, traffic council you know by there. "I'm going to calculate what I think I can build there that will be successful, that will draw customers, draw office tenants, draw hotel users, whatever it is." And they're going to calculate, based on that building density and height and use, revenue that's going to come out of the building. And then they're going to use, without getting technical, some calculation about capitalization rates. They're going to say, "We need to get an X return on that opportunity on that land. Here's what it's going to cost us to build that opportunity on that land." And then, at the end of the equation, they're going to solve for land value. So they're going to do just the opposite of what most people think. They're going to say land value is the last calculation, not the first. Now, the more density, the higher the revenue that comes out of that land, the more the developer is willing to pay for the land when they solve the equation. The less density that's involved there, the less revenue to the developer, the less they're going to be interested in paying for the land. And overlay over that, your vision for what you want. Somehow in that mix, there's going to be land values that come out based on use. And then you're going to be interacting with landowners that already exist there about how your vision, their interest in maximizing land value, developers' interest in getting a return on their investment, how that all works together. But the bottom line is, the more it works together, and the better the development that goes on there, the higher the land value is going to be. Putting it simply, if you decided to build, which you wouldn't, a whole series of one-story retail stores at Wooddale and Thorndale versus a complex similar to the pictures that Kevin showed you, the land values for a one-story retail at that corner would be substantially less than the land values for what Kevin showed you because the revenue that's going to come out of the building is substantially less than the pictures Kevin showed. If the revenue's less, when you solve for what I can pay for the land, the land value's less. Does that help?
I think it's a very good answer. I liked it very much, very educational. I'd like to ask you, expanding that answer, how does this affect land values going further away from the corridor? Homeowners within a mile radius of the developed area? I mean, the development is going to go, let's say, so many feet. And then from there, you have the houses that are already in place. If this is a very well-developed area, this area draws people. It's obviously going to draw people who want to live in the city but don't want to live in a high-rise. So what does it do for the values of the homes in the mile radius in all directions of your development?
Well, let's look at that two ways. First, you're going to want to protect the home values of the residents in your vision. Meaning, whatever your vision is, let's say you find out that you can do a fabulous hotel, convention center. I don't know that you can, but let's just say that you could. You're clearly, when you say, "Okay, where's the land used to do that?" You're not going to allow that hotel to build a parking lot with high lights that back up into someone's residence. So your vision is going to be protective of the residents. But on the other hand, you're still going to want development. So half of an answer to your question is, you want to retain housing values by creating a vision that is respectful of the interface between residential and commercial. But then, the other side of it is, you want to enhance residential values by making Wooddale an even more attractive place to live because there are more things to do, because there are more restaurants to go to, because there are more jobs, because there's an enhanced mix of housing that wasn't here before. Just more people coming here that find this attractive is going to enhance the value of your residential component as exists now. It's going to give the people that live there more things to do. And when they go to sell their homes, Wooddale is going to be more on the map theoretically than it is today. The other thing is, to the extent that you roll development on Thorndale and also look at the downtown into an economic picture, the idea is to create more tax revenue for you. And certainly, the more property tax revenue and sales tax revenue you generate, the more opportunities you have in your overall municipal planning, whether it's capital improvements or anything else, to provide services to your residents that you might not be able to afford today. So you could look at it both ways. One, preserving their value. And secondly, enhancing their value, both from a market enhancement point of view and secondly, enhancing it from, the more revenue you have, the better the services and the higher quality services you can provide to residents.
So I take it your answer is that it will increase the value of homes in a half-mile to a mile radius of the project?
Yes.
The last question I'd like to ask you, how much of a vision does IDOT have beyond the road? How much of a vision do they come to the table with for developing communities and helping the development of communities along the road that they're making?
I have some experience with that, but I'm sure Pete has more.
Well, old IDOT wouldn't listen to you much. It wouldn't be very helpful. New IDOT is getting a lot better at what you'd like them to do. In fact, the General Assembly asked them to do that because they just weren't very good at looking at communities when they decided to widen roads and so forth. So as part of the process that IDOT is going through right now is a process called context-sensitive solutions. Context-sensitive design, which is probably something you've heard of before. And so IDOT is learning how to consider the community needs and understand the impact of their facilities on your community. So IDOT's getting better at that. But you'll need help, and that's one of the reasons that we're here, because we'd like to help you with that. At the end of the day, however, IDOT will decide what to do. They have to listen to you until they make the decision. But the Federal Highway Administration and the State Department of Transportation will just decide what to do. So it's very important that they hear you during that process. How did it do?
Well, you can't do good and you can't do bad because we're talking about somebody else. And you're describing what you see out there. And you're telling me that you see two generations of people and that the new generation is more open-minded, accessible, and probably able to be talked with than the old IDOT. And we've had experiences with what you have just called as the old IDOT around the Irving Park corridor about being, "This is it, and we're not listening to you," until you scream.
A lot of the old dogs have retired at IDOT. And, you know, so there's people there that are more understanding of your needs. But at the end of the day, they're going to decide what to do based on all the information they have in front of them. But they're getting a lot better at considering the communities.
Thank you. It's Marcia or Marciar?
Mesha.
Is there an R at the end?
No.
Marcia.
It's okay.
Okay.
Everybody gets that wrong.
Mesha's stolen.
There he is.
Okay. Mayor?
In your presentation, you noted, you referenced the need for a coordinated master plan. I see on your map you've got Devon Avenue highlighted and Irving Park Avenue highlighted. Do you have some thoughts in mind? And what is the importance of looking beyond the scope of just the Thorndale corridor? Whoever wants to field that one.
Well, the opportunity is that what you do on Thorndale can suggest other things happening in the downtown area. And I think that's really the exciting part about it, is that although IDOT is only interested in Thorndale, the bonus is, is that by setting the vision there and suggesting the connectivity from that corridor down to the downtown area and kind of painting a vision for what downtown Wooddale could be like, that's an exciting thing. And that's contagious. So as that corridor becomes something of greater scrutiny and more interest and the economics start to work, it's going to trickle down if you suggest it early on. So I think that's the importance of it.
I would say also, from an economic point of view, if I were to take a leap of judgment tonight, which is always dangerous, I would guess that ultimately, it will be determined that the Thorndale corridor revenue potential, assuming things are satisfied with IDOT, the potential in that corridor is going to far exceed what the revenue potential to the municipality is in the downtown. And that would not make you unique because downtowns are now more boutique-y. You know, you can always find different examples, like City of Chicago, maybe downtown Evanston. But downtowns are more boutique-y, more pedestrian-oriented, more sense of community, sense of place, less expansive thoughts about height and density because people like that lower field. Well, all those things are just fine. But they say that the ultimate revenue potential is different than the kind of uses you might be able to do on the Thorndale corridor. So in addition to talking, and then, of course, you've got the Wooddale corridor connecting them, in addition to talking about different possible scenarios for how downtown will be different than Thorndale, we'd actually like to run some scenarios for you economically to show that if these various things happen on Thorndale and if these various things happen on downtown and the two roll together, this would be the relative impact on your budget. Now, that's a lot of "if" and "relative." But I would think you'd want to do that kind of thinking. And we would want to do that kind of thinking with you.
And changing subjects, let me ask you the brutal honesty question, which I'm asking all consultants now. We're all part-time elected officials, and we may have the envision that on this site, there should be a 20-story hotel. But will you, as the experts, be brutally honest with us when we do go off in a strange direction or have a stupid idea and say, "You know, that should be a corporate headquarters"? Will you commit to us that you're going to give us your expertise and not just kind of measure the political winds and try to go the direction we're going, if that's not right for the community?
Part of your vision statement requires ethical representation. And as we reviewed your vision statement, we understood what you were requesting and requiring of people that work with you. And it's important to us, at the end of the day, for you to say, "You know, we listened to a lot of people. We had 14 people apply for this, 14 organizations. And at the end of the day, we selected White and Company, BDI, and Lee Daniels and Associates. They listened to us, they worked for us, they told us the truth. We're professionals, that's our job. And our reputation is staked upon doing the right kind of job and meeting the vision that you have. We can tell you a all number of things. At the end of the day, you're going to make the decisions. The stakeholders in this municipality are going to make the decisions, and the citizens are going to make them. But we will be straightforward, ethical, and honest in the direction that we think you should go. We'll lay out opportunities, we'll lay out considerations, and through an economic analysis, along with master planning, we'll give you what we think is the best results." You know, just think of downtown communities that you've been to, that you've enjoyed. Just think of places that you've visited, whether it's along a riverbed, as Salt Creek Opportunity gives to you, or whether it's power retailing and the opportunity for large retailers, or a hotel complex, or a downtown that's pedestrian-friendly but yet has the residential component and is considerate of its elected officials and its community residents. That's the kind of input that we want to give to you and participate with you in developing for the community. So the answer is yes. We will be straightforward and, at times, if necessary, brutally honest. Yeah. And if I may expand on that Lee's answer just a little. The part of the straightforward will be, we're going to probably provide you with opportunity analysis that one might call pragmatic. It's such an unusual marketplace right now. It's hard to say what is pragmatic. But, you know, the world keeps changing. A year from now will be different than last year. But we're going to provide you with pragmatic analysis. We're also going to provide you with things that push the envelope a bit. In other words, they're not simply pragmatic. There are opportunities that may be there in the marketplace if you partner with them in certain ways. And then, the ultimate answer as to what's pragmatic and what pushes the envelope is going to be when you go to Marketplace because the ultimate arbitrator of all this is indeed the marketplace. And so we're trying to set up the system for you to do that. And in the spirit of pragmatic advice tonight, the master planning process is going to be very exciting because we're going to be blue-skying ideas, going to have charrettes, interaction with citizens and elected officials. That's all good, and it'll be a lot of fun. But if you look at the next five years, the two major issues that you're going to look in the eye, and anybody can write RFQs and anybody can send them to developers, not anybody, but it's not all that hard. Your two primary issues, once the master plan is done, is going to be very simple. Number one is land control. It's great to have terrific ideas, but if somebody else owns the land, you have to figure out a way for them to become your quote-unquote "partner." So land control is going to be a key issue. I believe the other issue is going to be, there's going to be incredible amount of work to pursue the action plan that we give you. And that is going to be an amount of work that probably is a burden on your staff now and a burden on you as elected officials. So deciding how you line up resources to pursue the work after the master plan is done, I think pragmatically, is going to be the second major challenge. Not a bad challenge, but just the second major challenge.
Alderman, please.
I think the mayor might have been referring to one of those aldermen that's with the wild ideas, probably myself. As far as, you know, that corridor, I look at that corridor and I see it developing into a city within a city without disturbing the residential, you know. I know somebody mentioned putting in residential in there and whatnot, but I think impacting the schools and the park districts isn't what we're looking for here. I think more upgrading the industrial, getting more out of an industrial park, maybe adding some hotels, restaurants. The thing came up about the theater. You know, anything that generates sales revenue, along with some offices and whatnot, corporate headquarters, whatever. As long as, also, in that area, put in like a nice focal point where the citizens can go, where they have few restaurants around, maybe some nice little waterfall or something that's where the people can go and relax on a Saturday night. I'm probably one of those guys with the wild ideas that the mayor was referring to.
I don't think those are wild ideas. And, you know, I've driven down the corridor many times. I drove by again tonight. I'm not at all suggesting that what jumps out at me when I drive that corridor is, "What a wonderful place to live." But on the other hand, we're trained to not take anything off the table until it's time to take it off the table. So for instance, if one built the park-like environment at the river that Kevin talked about, it's kind of easy, not today, but it's kind of easy for me to start thinking about higher-density residential, meaning nice townhomes that perhaps price points you're not used to in Wooddale, tough to talk about in '08, but a higher price point urban residential along that park-like setting. So I'm not prepared to take it off the table, but I acknowledge totally that residential is not your goal and it doesn't jump out. The other thing you should know is that environments where residential does make sense, sometimes residential makes the deal work. Meaning, if you have retail in the front and residential in the back and residential, which it has been up till 12 months ago, is an easier play, sometimes the whole deal as to how you get the resident, the retail, is because the developer is able to do residential in back, create cash flow, and allows them to do things in the front that they wouldn't be able to do without that investment in the back. I'm not, again, suggesting that's what should happen here. Simply saying, it's way too early tonight to take it off the table.
Alderman Kadallop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to talk, or have you talk about deliverables and timeframes. I mean, there's the deliverables that we're pretty sure you're going to be able to give us, the strategy, the action plan. You're going to create that. We're going to get it. It'll be in writing, it'll be on paper. We're going to see that, we're going to work towards it. There's the deliverable that, if you've done your job right and we as a council can stay on track, the end result or the direction of the end result, where we begin to see the redevelopment. First of all, the one thing we're pushing for is that, you know, that our opinion, our educated opinion, bringing consultant on and our vision lines up with what IDOT is planning on doing. And then, the physical redevelopment of the space. And then, the milestones and the timeframes to get to that point. What do you see is the process, the amount of involvement, both from council, from the public? Typically, a process like this, how long it'll take? What can we expect to see if you're chosen and when?
Well, maybe I can answer part of the question. We all can chime in on that. Is, to do a good consensus process, it's going to take a little bit of time. And something, you know, Terry mentioned some ideas about having what's called designed charrettes. I don't know if you're familiar with that term. But that's working as a large group, kind of big picture, to get a lot of ideas out on the table. And then giving us time to come back and to draw those up and put a little reality into it. I think that that has several, what I would call several touches, certainly with this group and maybe with other community constituents. So this could be maybe a six-to-nine-month process to, you know, adequately vet out those kind of physical ideas. As far as the market research component and IDOT's schedule, I'm going to defer with my colleagues.
Well, if IDOT maintains schedule, they'll have a draft environmental impact statement in February. You know, we wouldn't want to be done, I don't think, before that comes out. We would want to be actively working on the project as they're putting together their draft environmental impact statement. And once it comes out, we would probably want to be still working on this process for you in order to comment on that and try to influence the locally-preferred alternative. That's how I would view it.
I think Peter is correct. And I think, just off the top of my head, it would be a mistake to think this would take less than 12 months. And to create the documents that you want to have and you've approved that then can be the initial document to tease the marketplace. And in that 12 months, obviously, the consultants doing what they're supposed to do, the work, is always an issue. But candidly, the length of the assignment is always related to the ability to set meetings in the community and the number of meetings you'd like to have. So the quality of the consensus-building process, the ability to set meetings, like if we were to start tomorrow, people don't usually hold meetings that require citizen input in July and August because of summer schedules. You don't usually do meetings between Thanksgiving and January 1 for obvious reasons. So fitting in schedules that fit in your schedule but at the same time give citizens ample opportunity to have input is really critical to the length. But I would say, I don't think it's going to be less than 12 months.
And I would agree with that. And of course, part of my responsibility would be in the vision meetings and community involvement. And I see three major meetings with the community as a whole. And of course, you'll determine how many are necessary. If more are necessary, we'll do that. But that will drive, to a great extent, the amount of time. As we talked about this earlier, we discussed the timeframe, and we thought nine to 12 months. But certainly, probably, and I agree with Terry, probably with IDOT's consideration and the work that we've done with them in the past, we think that it'll be a minimum of 12 months.
Alderman Wesley?
Backed up, is that nine to 12 months from when IDOT approves the plan, whatever plan they choose for, or the stakeholders? Or is that from get-go that you start going with?
From the get-go, from the start of the project. But as Mr. Mesha said, we don't think that you want to conclude this project prior to getting IDOT's final report.
No, definitely, because, as you know, you predict that you consider a three-way exit off of Thorndale there. The other follow-up question I have on that is, you said that you did not have any input on the DuPage County study that was done on Thorndale? You have?
That is correct. Let me have, Pete, do you want to expand on that?
The DuPage County economic study, we're very familiar with it, but we were not involved in preparing that. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Coles, please.
I have a question. I've been listening. There's about three companies together under this one roof. Now, suppose, suppose something comes up and one of the three cannot meet the obligations to the other two. What happens then? Everything stops?
No, the other two are going to take them to the woodshed.
Well, no, no. I'm serious.
Well, I'm serious, too.
I've seen that happen when three companies get together and then all of a sudden, one backs out and the other two are held up, you know.
Correct. Well, and I'm very serious in my answer. We are a team that are...
That does not help the City of Wooddale if one backs out.
One is not going to back out.
Well, I'm just...
I think you know my 32...
Just one of my questions, that's all I'm talking about.
Well, let me answer that directly.
Okay.
My 32 years of experience in working with Wooddale over the years, I think you know that history. I think you know my history. And I think you know where I live. I've worked with White and Company, and they have a strong, strong relationship to not only DuPage County, the state of Illinois, founded in 1939. And they have an outstanding reputation. BDI, of course, speaks for itself with its strong recommendation in economic and market analysis. So you will see the components that we are required to perform as part of this contract. And of course, I can't predict tomorrow any more than anyone else can, but I can make an observation. We carefully put this team together as a team that will deliver for you. And we say to you that we will complete our assignment. And we make that pledge to you because our reputation depends on it. We can't come in here and not perform in the standards that we're saying that we will perform. And that's important to us.
I might add that what would be typical when you select a consultant team is that a final scope of services and budget would be negotiated with your staff. And part of that, you would see specific responsibilities of each team member, budget for each team member within the overall budget, timeline for team members to deliver results. So there wouldn't be any mystery in month one, two, or three. You would know exactly who's doing what they were supposed to do in the early stages.
All right, then you fellows will agree that if one backs out, you don't get paid, the other two companies don't get paid?
Sure.
How's that for an answer? Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, by law, I need to call the city council meeting to order by 7:35. So I think you need to wrap it up.
Okay. I would like to thank the members of BDI, Wright, and Daniels and Associates for coming to our council, our committee meeting tonight and putting forth their plans. Mr. Kevin Havens, Mr. Stefan Collins, Mr. Peter and Mesha, Terrence Jenkins, and of course, Mr. Lee Daniels. We want to thank all of you for your appearance tonight.
Thank you very much. And as we said at the start, we have a stick for you, for your computer, which covers the presentation that we had so that when you have an opportunity to sit down in front of your computer, you can review what we have told you. And we appreciate the opportunity to be with you. Thank you very much.
Future items for future discussion will be, of course, our decisions that come out of discussing all of these issues between the two closing candidates. I would like to ask for an adjournment. I move this committee meeting be adjourned. Please show that Mr. Alderman Wesley, Eugene Wesley, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee of June 26, 2008 to order, please. Would the rule-taker please call a roll?
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Lewatan?
Here.
Alderman Chocky?
Here.
Alderman Kadallop?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Kinnick?
The first item is approval of minutes of June 12, 2008. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. One item is the report and...